Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. Amy, I mean Abby, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. All right. Anthony, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Today's meeting is a public hearing to look at our redistricting map for the magisterial and senate districts. And the voting precincts for Fayette County per the 2020 census. In just a little bit, Michelle Holly is going to come and explain the options that we're looking at. After speaking with her over the last few days, she has really conveyed that we need to get this thing finished, Commissioners, by December the 10th. So that she'll have the ability to get the cards out to all the new, for new voting places, going out to everybody that's a voter in the county that's affected by the changes that'll be made. Normally, we would receive our changes or our requests to start looking at this in April, but it was held up nationally this year. The state didn't get theirs until a late time, and they waited till the very, well, they called for extra days during their special session in order to complete everything. We heard so many different variations of maps coming out that Michelle was pulling what little bit of hair she had out, not really, she has nice hair. But it was a, it was a long process. I want to give kudos to her and the people that helped her with, with the process because you had to look senate lines, you had to look at house lines, and then you had to determine where's going to be the least impact on people coming out to vote. And on just about all of these variations, the maps that we have today, there were some precincts that were together that probably haven't been joined together before. But it's just necessary to do that. After she gets done with presenting of the maps, then I'm going to give people a chance to ask questions. When you ask questions, you'll have three minutes to ask your question. And then, you know, just give us your input and then sit down after the three minutes. If you happen to get ruly or try to go over three minutes, you'll be gavelled. And when I gavel you, I would expect you to go ahead and sit down, or if you're in Zoom, to ease your conversation. Any question on what I've talked about so far? Okay. Anything from you?
I was just going to clarify, he's not going to gavel you personally, he's going to bang the gavel up here.
Well, I didn't take it.
I just thought it was funny when he said that you will be gavelled.
Well, okay.
Well, what I do want to say before we get started is, and I'll ask the county clerk to explain it a little further, but, but there are a whole lot of rules that we also have to follow with these drawing of lines. And including, they have to follow to some sort the senatorial and the congressional districts, and they have to be continuous, they can't split up, and the precincts all have to have the same exact ballot. So it, it's a lot more technical than it sounds. And further, we have a, just a standard deviation of 10% where the numbers have to fall. So we have to have close to the same number of people in each of the three districts as well. So all of those rules considered, not every option that we would love to, to try is, is one that we can do by statute. So we, they have to be even, and, and we've tried to come up with some ideas to, to make it more fair than it has been, and to make it even and more representative of the people who live in the districts that are identified. And it will affect, you know, depending on how we draw the lines, who, you know, whether some of us are still in a, your district, it's going to affect Board of Education candidates. And, and I am not motivated by that. I feel like we need to do the right thing by the county and that we need to put, and I don't think anybody up here is motivated by that. I think we, we all have felt like every district doesn't need a nexus to the plateau like it has traditionally. And, and we, we've all talked about that multiple times over this last year. So I discourage you from considering that as well. I don't think the politics are important or the politicians are important either. I feel like it's important that you are represented by people who live in your community or among you who understand what your community's needs are, and that's where we're going with it. Want to get Michelle to get started, or Tommy has something?
I'm good, I'd, I'd agree with everything you said, y'all said.
Okay. Except for what?
The gaveling.
At the gaveling, okay.
We do, we discourage the gaveling.
Did, is it, does it have a yellow light up there? It may need, did you put batteries in it?
You have to hold, push it and hold it down to get it.
Yeah, there's lights on there.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to kind of go through relatively quickly the precinct changes first. There are two pieces today that this meeting was for, the precinct changes and also then the magisterial districts. They're both governed by different sets of rules. Precincts have a, a minimum and maximum number of registered voters they can contain. We also take a look at, you know, how easy is it going to be for someone to get to a polling place? In our county, we have to think, oh, these two places are very close together, but there's no, no way to get from point A to point B. That person would have to drive all the way up over the mountain and come back all the way down to get to this polling place. So Sarah Tucker, my elections clerk, and I looked at all of that and came up with what we felt were pretty good precincts, pretty good lines, pretty good places, that also kind of kept us within the same number of precincts we had before. Because as I mentioned in our last meeting, we did have to create six precincts solely based upon the fact of where the House of Delegates and the State Senate drew their districts. So as Allison mentioned, while that impacted it, was everyone in a precinct by law has to vote on the same ballot. So even when you have a ballot, you would have to all vote for the same House of Delegates member. You'd all have to vote on the same senate race, the same people in those races. Because of the way those lines overlapped, there are places on our current precinct map where that wouldn't work. So we had to draw new lines, that's where most, 99% of these new precinct lines came from. I'm not really going to go through that, we went through this, and I have a list of all of those changes. Which is, I mean, extensive, I don't, do you guys want me to go through any of those, or do you want to ask questions about that?
I would prefer you to go through everything and then have the questions afterward.
So, I mean, we can. I, I made a larger map of the Oak Hill Fayetteville area because that is where the great majority of the changes happened. The House and, uh, House of Delegates lines and the senate lines converge, all converge in Fayetteville, in city limits of Fayetteville, in fact. So there were lots of changes that had happened there. I mean, and then there's just, you know, where they use census blocks, and we use, again, by law, precincts are supposed to be bounded by natural boundaries as much as possible, rivers, ridge tops. But they use census blocks and census blocks on this other unit. So there's some precincts got small changes, some got a lot of changes, and we built some new ones. So Oak Hill has three new precincts within it. Two, which is the portion of Watt Valley Road and 19 up in there through the city limits of Oak Hill. Seven is a new precinct in Oak Hill, which will follow Terry Avenue and Gatewood Road, a piece of that. There's a piece of that that will vote in the 10th senatorial district, but vote in the 52nd delegate district. Now, in the main part of Oak Hill, 12, 11, and 13, slight numbers changed in there for their lines, they increased our lines. 14 is a new precinct, which is not, is just south of Oak Hill, that's the Glen, like the Harvey and Red Star area. Over to Thurman. 15 is Broadway Avenue and eastern side of East End of Oak Hill, that's got some additions. 16 is a new precinct in Oak Hill outside of Fayetteville. And then we get into some of the minor changes in the rest of the county. 17, so we can, because of where they drew some senate lines, we combined parts of 17 and 18 with precinct 5, which is the Scarborough area. 19 has a new boundary, which is the Glen Jean area, some of Beckville. Mount Hope didn't need to change, my hope is the same, 23. I combined a couple precincts that made sense numbers-wise, 26, because up in the northwestern corner of the county, I combined parts of three different precincts to make that, make that precinct. They will vote at the Union Hall in Hamilton, which is where most of that precinct is voted before. Down around the valley, 28, which is the Smithers area and parts of that one did not change. 47 is smaller than it used to be, that's city limits of Montgomery now, because they will vote in the 52nd delegate district. 46 combined the rest of that with 46. Were, were 70. Next four precincts, which are in the Fayetteville area, may change depending upon which magisterial proposal was accepted by the commission. Currently, there were, there were only minor changes in 51, which is the Beckwith area from Thousand Oaks all the way up to Beckwith. 52, which is part of Fayetteville city limits, did not change. 55 also did not change, also part of Fayetteville city limits, nor did 56. Those lines could change depending upon which magisterial proposal is accepted. We'll go over those when we get to them. 58, there was no change, which is the Heiko Ramsey area, Heiko, they voted in the trail. 60, which is the Anstead precinct, there were two precincts there, there was 59 and 60. 59 had too few voters in it to be considered a precinct. So they are combined with 60, they currently vote less than a mile from each other now. So that I did not see a necessary, necessary hardship in combining those two precincts. 60, and then new, new haven't changed some. Okay, so the Meadow Bridge, 68 will be the Meadow Bridge area now. 70 runs from the eastern side of McKinley all the way to Thurman, because of, because of delegates senate lines. 72 is now is the Danish area. 73 is Prince and Quinamont, the very southern tip of the county. And then 74, which is Corliss and parts in that area, remain the same. Those are the precinct changes as I'm proposing them. And 99% of those changes are only based on the fact that those house lines and senate lines changed, and I had to draw a new line where a line was not before. And then a couple spots where we combined precincts that had too few voters, or it made sense that they could all go to the same, same pieces, parts to vote. It wasn't a hard, travel hardship, it shouldn't be too much of a longer drive for anyone. Like 41 and 42 were combined, but again, they vote on Deepwater Mountain Row and 61, about five miles from each other currently. So we're not asking anybody to go that much farther to their polling place. The second, the second proposal, I'll briefly touch on those, 51. There's four precincts in Fayetteville that could change based on which magisterial map is chosen. Sarah wants to come up on that. Sarah has been a huge help in all this, by the way.
That is right. Got to keep in mind that two of the grade schools that you use for voting will be closing. So we need to find out if they're going to be open for this next round of elections or not.
Yes.
Okay.
I do know one, one, I know Gollybridge on which was closing.
We should get to the primary.
Yes, because the primaries in May, so we should have gone there. Yeah, I was going to say, instead, we have options in both those places, I think, if we can speak with their, their city governments and see, I know the Midland Trail Community Center is, is decently sized, and then Gollybridge, Gollybridge Town Hall is also, has a, you know, they would be amenable to that. I have not spoken to any of them about that, but that was a thought I had up there in Gollybridge when I saw that it's going to be closed.
Okay.
So just briefly on Fayetteville and Oak Hill, this Fayetteville precinct that would change under, over four or five, we need to magisterial visit in a second. And we would combine the Thousand Oaks area up through part of Beckwith, the southern part of 51 into precinct 52. Falls in, like I said, the Thousand Oaks, the Spring Oaks area, and goes around, I don't remember which road that is now, but it's, I think it's the road. And then part of 56, precinct 56 and 52 and 55 all meet out here on the corner of Gatewood and Forest Street. And so it would pull parts of 56 that are, the small part of 56 is on this side of 19 and 55, along with some more of Fayetteville city limits across 19 into 55. And then when 56 would be closure up to the Anstead area, closure to Route, I think it was all the way Route 60. So there are still some portions of Fayetteville city limits that will lie in 56 because they, Fayetteville's annexed all the way up and around. It looks like maybe Mission Four is annexed into the city of Fayetteville. So that was still lying in 56, but it mathematically didn't really work to try to combine any more than, than pulling those people that live much closer to Fayetteville, the city of Fayetteville, to those precincts. Which then makes precincts 51 and 56 smaller than they were in 56. Those are the precinct changes. And I, I'm, we can now go into those magisterial districts if that is what the commission would like to hear about. I feel like I'm talking a lot.
I have one question for you and Anthony both. When, when we go to do this, the point of order would be to approve the precinct changes first? And then approve the magisterial changes?
We're talking about today?
No, not today.
Okay. I don't know the answer to that, I'm going to have to, I'll have to look into that. But if you're talking about that, it would make sense that we did the precinct changes first, because the magisterial district should be based on precincts.
We do, we base the magisterial district lines along those precinct lines. Just easier essentially to have all these lines match. If we were to ever to go to a situation where someone, where magisterial districts, you only voted on the person from your magisterial district for whatever race it was, and they would have to follow all of them.
But for matter of convenience, it's, magisterial districts are coinciding with precincts.
Correct.
So it would make sense to me that we would address the precincts first.
And then the magisterial.
Okay. Let me check and see if there's anything that, that caused me to change my mind.
Okay, thank you. All right, I, I just want to make sure that we have the order correct when we go to do it. Okay.
So magisterial districts.
Are you going to start with like the number one through?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there are currently, we had spoken at the October 27th meeting, and at that point, there were three different proposals in those magisterial district maps. To give a little background on why we were changing them, code requires as magisterial districts to be as nearly as equal in population and as nearly equal in territory as possible. Courts have ruled that, to give us a, a number to work on, would be that the population variance between them is approximately 5% or so, which is a structural difference between the size of the town, the size of the smallest, the difference between the smallest and largest of those magisterial districts. In total population, it's different than such. So that's our, our kind of guidelines on that. With that, our current magisterial districts as they stand are almost 20% different from the smallest district in the world. But we clearly have to make some changes. We are, we are not complying with the law, as we can say, or we're just going to ignore that, we watch what we've got now, and we have to make a change. So that is where these proposals have come, but there's a myriad way, an infinite number of ways. We can set that down into three pieces and come up with three nearly equal pieces in population.
Wouldn't surprise me.
My, so I first started with the idea of what makes the most simplest, what makes the simplest sense. And that was, do you want me to run the thing?
Do you want that on the screen, or do you want the?
It, it doesn't matter, people.
It'd probably be easier for.
Everyone to see, yeah. But in the Google Art too, we can get closer if you might, if, when we get to the question part, if people have questions about certain things. So this is proposal, this was proposal one, this was the easiest one, I guess the least change, I should say. So on all these maps, the yellow will be the New Haven district, the blue is the Plateau district, and then the white would be the Valley district. This particular map, the only change that happens is precinct 58, which is up here, the top part, top middle there. That is Ramsey and Heiko, that would put that precinct in the Valley district. I know that there has been a lot of historical talk throughout the last 10 years of, oh, Anstead is going to be next. Anstead won and the Valley next, now it's going to come back to number four. When I did that, when I moved precinct 60, because 59 is where, which is the part of 60 now, is where it is in the county. When I moved to the amount of people on the Anstead precinct in the Valley numbers, it actually shifted. It did give us a little closer, but not close enough, it was 12.15, 12.5. So just shifting them didn't, didn't. So fifth, but moving the number of people that are in that 58 precinct did give us a little closer, another 9.56%. Just, just under our, our line, still would leave the Plateau and the Valley, and this kid would put New Haven at this, at this line.
Did you say it was 9.56%?
Yes.
Okay.
So the second proposal. Eric, all right, so on this map, Sarah's, Sarah's real helping, I thought she was my man and wife, no wonder. This map only moves two precincts around. And it moves precinct 23, which is the Mount Hope area precinct, into the Valley. And then to offset that number shift from the Plateau to the Valley, it moves precinct four, which is Gatewood and up through Canard, moves it into the Plateau. And that gets us a little bit closer, we get to 6.41%. And then we started playing around with a little more, like, moving, moving things around is more, more to see. We kind of, I will weigh in our traditional areas of what the maps had looked like before, what we could maybe come, come up with. And our first attempt was this particular map. Which put the Plateau area, Plateau area precincts together with some New Haven, Fayetteville and Oak Hill together to make the Plateau district. And then shifted the Valley to the southern half of the county and shifted New Haven to the northern half of the county. Again, this one is still under the 10%, it comes to 8.74% as currently configured. So that was our third, our kind of third proposal, the third round of looking at this map. And then we decided to start looking at it. And, and as more people brought in ideas, Allison will actually come in and ask about this, if there were ways that we could pull in some of the people from some of these other precincts, could we, how, how much could we change? Kind of the question. And we found that if we moved, if we shifted a couple precincts, which was, I explained a little bit earlier with those precinct changes, if I took some of the people from 51 that were closer to the Fayetteville or Plateau area, and some of the people from precinct 56 that are also closer to that Fayetteville area and put them together, and then reshifted again, those New Haven stays to the eastern side of, of the county, Bay, Valley stays to the western side, we get even closer, we get to 2.44% difference in the three districts.
And I'll be specific, I asked her to take Thousand Oaks out of the Valley and to take the rest of the town of Fayetteville or as much as in-town and, and in the town districts, and put it in the Plateau district because that is where it geographically exists. I didn't think that the Thousand Oaks population up here on the Plateau has much in common with the Valley. And so I felt like there had to be a better way to draw the lines to make the representatives, you know, to make it more, the demographics more consistent with the people who live in those areas.
Also point out on this fourth map, this removes precinct nine, which is part of Oak Hill. I think there might be a small portion of city limits because it does include Minnan in that precinct nine, moves it to New Haven, under this fourth proposal. And then the fifth, the fifth proposal. Mr. Commissioner Brown, President Brown came in and we, I looked at numbers a little bit farther. And this map, just one. It's the same. So there were some slight changes in, in this one. We put those pieces of 51 and 56, which were currently in the, currently in the Valley district on the fourth map, but those in New Haven, so moved New Haven around that way, and then shifted the Valley through Mount Hope and over into precinct 19, which is Glen Jean and the sun affected, or the move the Valley area over into that piece. And that actually comes even closer to even at 1.75% difference between the house and the mountain.
So what were the differences between the two? So basically, from the first one, Glen Jean went into the Valley.
And then 51 and 56 moved from the Valley to New Haven.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I didn't feel that Adventures on the Gorge had anything to do with the Valley.
Oh, that's true. So these two, so the, the new 51 and 56.
Correct.
Are over, are in the, are in New Haven.
Right, connected through Anstead.
So they would be yellow, and then so we, basically, so basically just took this in and put that in the Valley. Yeah, that's a, that's a, still represents my concerns, I mean. Yeah, that's a, that's a, still represents my concerns. I mean, I think they both look good.
Now, ten years ago, just to give you a little bit of an idea, I don't know if you looked it up or not, but I asked a few questions. The percentage of difference was two point four. And it grew to eighteen percent in ten years. So we want to make sure that we keep the percentage of differences with the amount of population. As, you know, smaller as we can go. In order to have a a smaller variance. At ten years out. Plus, we know that with having, you know, the the national park here and some other things that are happening. Anstead's working on a, on a huge upgrade on on sewer and water. That's going to, going to help quite a bit. We have other areas working on water upgrades and sewer upgrades and. It it's going to make a lot of differences on where people can come in, but our largest opportunity by far is housing. We need houses.
One thing I would, I would, I'll add a couple things to this portion here. One. As I mentioned earlier, I mean, there could be infinite number of these. I mean, we don't need an infinite number of. Ideas to choose from, but I also feel like the commission and I are are open if someone has other proposals that. Meet all of these requirements that they would certainly be considered. The, I guess the code would be, I mean, this is a collaboration. At the end of the day, these things are ordered by the county commission. That's how the code works. So, but you guys, you know, have to gavel a lot of things as John said. So. That said, I know I have been, there was a request that we look at at moving things a little differently. And and laying most of Route sixty into what would be the Valley district. For economic development purposes, they felt. And so I I'm certainly going to look at that option. And my immediate look at it looked like it might be a little complicated to to achieve. But it's certainly something that if if it, if there are calculations that would work, I would certainly bring it to the commission as well as an option. And then a couple of other salient points to this. One, as John mentioned. There are, there are time constraints involved in this, both statutorily and practically. Once we get the precinct set and these magisterial districts set, we have to notify every voter whose precinct or polling place has changed. With a written, some kind of written. What I would like to do, that's the commission to approve some funding for, is to do a mailer to the whole county. To every voter in the county, registered voter in the county, that simply says, you know, there's been a lot of changes to our voting districts this year. If if your polling place or precinct has changed, you will be receiving a new voter registration card in the mail from our office. We can run the gamut on that from being, make, make, we could make them voter specific. If we wanted to, we could program that to do it. Or we could just do a simple postcard mailer that way. Go to just everyone with the same message. I mean, that can be worked out later, but I would, I would like to do that. Or as soon as we get something.
Could we also, if if we're doing a new website, could we also put the map on there? And locate the precincts, locate where they're, they vote at. So they can just go online and see where they live and see where the precinct is and click on it and. Well, just like the map I'm working on, Google Earth.
Yeah, that is, that is. Our GPS has that capability really easily. So we can just add a layer of our precincts. And then when someone searches for their address, just like when they use the assessor's map, that could be a layer. That would show them, you know, in near as you're, as long as we keep that information current in that layer, we're good to go.
You don't want to have to change it if precincts change or anything.
I know we currently.
That'd be something you could take care of, right?
Yeah, we'd find somebody. I was gonna say, the second part of this is I will be needing to hire some extra help. We're going to be mailing. I'm I'm hopeful to do the mailer as a, we get everything ready, we send it to the printer and they do the actual mailing. Because that just is twenty four thousand pieces of mail coming out of here. I mean, that stays on the machine, on the postage machine, that stays on.
So we have a population of forty thousand, well, and some of those are kids though, I guess. Twenty four thousand registered voters. What percentage of our adult population are registered, do you know?
I can get the total voting age population number and get it for you.
Kind of random, but.
No, that's a, that's a good question. And I don't think we're going to work.
Ruth and I looked up yesterday, our population back in nineteen eighty was fifty eight thousand. And now it's forty thousand. It seemed like a lot more back then, there didn't it? More than that thirty percent increase, but that's, that's what it was.
It's about sixty seven percent of the population you're voting.
Registered.
Yeah, registered to vote.
So for those who don't want us to grow, you know, we used to be thirty percent larger in this county and we were fine.
So as far as.
I'm just curious, any of this doesn't affect the delegates, doesn't affect the any.
Their, their lines are set and are stones and code, I guess. And so we have those lines. Those, whatever we do here is not going to change that. In fact, I have to work within what they, the boundaries they gave us. So.
The only thing that may make changes would be the counties in eastern Maryland. That are western Maryland wants to move into west Virginia. But I I don't know if that's.
I don't blame them, but.
Yeah, I guess that could be your state's.
So that's the only thing that would. Okay, anything else for me?
No, I I just want to commend you for that. And and, I mean, I know how much work you put into it. It took, just, just for the record. To to make map four, it took us several hours. The other afternoon. And and this is taken away from her, you know, daily responsibilities to come up with these for everybody. So, you know, it took that amount of time to do each of these. And I know that the one that Michelle just referenced was about running it along Route sixty. From what I understand, it was the mayors of Smithers and Anstead who had an idea. And I I know they're both online. So I'd certainly like to hear what their idea is.
I know that they're going to be meeting with Michelle on Monday at eight o'clock.
Yeah, that, I I bring those data. I like to listen to what they have to say.
Yeah, just in general terms. I mean, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see the other map, but I, I really would like us also to put, if if y'all don't mind. First, let's, when do you think we ought to vote on this? Do you think we ought to put it on next week's meeting? Or do you think we ought to?
I think we wait until we have a meeting on December the eighth.
Is that when our meeting is?
Yeah.
I keep getting it wrong. I have given like three different dates for that meeting.
When were they more convenient for you?
As long as it's before December tenth, according to the.
Well, but they have a lot of time, they have a lot they have to do.
As soon as we can get it would be more useful for us as far as a practical because.
Well, I tell you what, too. Could you, is there any way you can give me? The address locations. What, once you get that done, if you give me the address locations and the, and everything on the map, the districts and everything, I could probably get that. That layer done.
Can we, can we have, is there any way to put the streets? Can we do a Google Earth on top of this thing? Or is there any way to incorporate it?
Yeah, I mean, for, for people, for you all to look at as proposal things or as, once we get it done, out for the public.
Well, it would help us by having it. And it would probably help the public by seeing it too. And then we can have it on the website after that.
Yeah, we are. Some of the complications in this, I'll be honest, is the, we have moved to a, a new statewide voter registration system. But there has been. Some issues in getting all of the modules up and running that we need to do some of this stuff. So I, I assume if you go to go vote west Virginia, it's going to show you, it'll show you your information. But it doesn't show you a map though, right? Just tells, tells you where your precinct is. I mean, I think what I envision is is us adding this as a layer. When we get it done. To like the assessors, the assessor stuff. And then people can, can look at it that way.
Have it separated on the website. Have that one layer on there for.
And then, yeah, but we could use, you know, and that shows nine one, nine one addresses and you can look it up that way. And as far as the proposal stuff goes. I know Google Earth is not, I mean, you have, you have to download the file and use the web or you can. It, it's not terribly difficult to use and you can search by address on it and it'll zoom you right into your address. And show you where you are on the map as far as the colors are.
Okay, all right. So just like Allison was saying. We'd like to hear from Mayor Cavalier and Mayor Pridemore. On what their thoughts are. And then they're going to meet with you on Monday at eight.
Mayor Cavalier did put a message here if you'd like me to read it.
Okay.
Mayor Cavalier said, Smithers, Montgomery, Golly Bridge and Anstead mayors appreciate the opportunity to discuss redistricting. And fully appreciate the time and expertise that Michelle brings to this effort.
She's not going to talk?
You may ask her if she talks.
Yeah, I mean, she, she made, she, she had a suggestion when I was in a meeting at Smithers the other day. And she was going to do some calculations is what she said. And I was just wanting to see if she'd done anything.
I'd just like to know in concept what they have in mind. Again, I'm, I'm open as long as it seems to, the districts seem to fairly represent the demographic. And, and they are the representatives of their districts. I, but what I was going to say is I think we need to identify when we're going to have the vote and then we have to have a cutoff on the map input. So if we, if we end up voting on it on Wednesday's meeting, I think the cutoff should be Monday afternoon. So we all have a chance to look at everything.
I agree.
And that should accommodate their meeting with Michelle.
And I think on the seventeenth, we could eliminate. A few.
Yeah, well, I, I think we should go ahead and vote on it on the seventeenth so they can get going. I mean, we'll have enough to consider them. I mean, I, I feel like I'm already down to. You know, I actually like five better than I like my own idea, but I would like to see what they have to say. I mean, so.
Mayor Cavalier. Mayor Pridemore, can you turn those two on? Or put them off mute?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you folks doing?
We're doing well.
Just together last night.
Well, we, we want to underline our appreciation in being included in the redistricting discussion. Certainly, Michelle has been very good to. Give us an understanding of all of the different components that need to go into redistricting. Considerations. We met yesterday evening with Commissioner Brenneman. And he offered, and I think all of the mayors have accepted the opportunity. To meet with Michelle, who's gracious enough to come in at eight o'clock this next Monday morning. And to take a look at what might be an opportunity. To put some geographically contiguous communities along Route sixty together. These communities have the most in common now and in the future. We have the commonality of where our people shop, where they go to church, where many of our children go to school. So we look forward to that and and. I really appreciate the opportunity to do that on Monday. We took a, a quick look yesterday evening. There are some challenges in putting this together. But if you would allow us that opportunity and if we can come up with. A redistricting plan that will help the western gateway cities. To the Gully. And the New River opportunities for tourism, that creates an economic advantage. I think for our communities who have long been left out of many of those opportunities. And as you know. We've been hit hard with the closure of tech, with the loss of our Valley High School. But we have started to rebuild and it's been wonderful working with the mayor of Montgomery, the mayor of Golly Bridge and a mayor of Anstead. I think we have a lot in common and I for one appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion on Monday. And let's see what we come up with. Thank you.
So so far, Anne, you guys have basically. You want to combine those, those geographic areas into one district, but you don't know how yet, how the numbers will work. Because you haven't had the chance to go over all that with Michelle. Is that right? Could you hear me?
No, it looks like she's frozen.
No, hold on a second. We can't hear you. If you can hear me.
We did, we did go over the numbers, but there's some other things that will enter into it such as. The senatorial districts and things of that nature. I don't think we have an overall view and that's why we wanted to meet on Monday. To see how it all works.
Okay. All right, well, I look forward to seeing it. I mean, and and by the way, I really appreciate that you guys took the initiative to present something to us. Because I don't like making decisions for you when, without you, if that makes.
Well, I, we, yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to have the meetings and, you know, discuss the ideas. We don't know the limitations. That's why, until we understand how everything impacts across the board. We really can't give a definitive answer to what you're talking about. But the association that we have on the Midland Trail means a lot to us and to all of our folks.
All right. Well, it sounds good. So can, can we set a deadline for Monday afternoon, close the business for new map considerations? Because that gives Thursday, Friday, the weekend and Monday for anybody to come up with something else and then.
I don't have.
If you feel like the agenda is too congested, I'm going to say we could try to set a special meeting.
Yeah. Counselor, can we make that decision today? Saying that Monday will be, Monday, close of business will be the last day for maps? All right, thank you.
Be on today's meeting.
Correct.
Essentially, I'd do that as an extension of today's meeting.
Right, that's, that's exactly what we're doing, but we're also, we want to get everything in, in time. To consider it for Wednesday's meeting rather than get things all the way up until Wednesday.
But I think the agenda is sufficiently.
Noticed.
Noticed as far as.
Okay.
Okay, well, I I move that we, that we establish a deadline of Monday at four P M. For submissions for any additional maps to consider. And I'll, so I'll start with that.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on making Monday close of business at the courthouse. The last day to receive anybody's interested map input for the magisterial districts.
And then, and then I think we should just put that item on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting. And then, and then I think we should just put that item on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, Anthony has said that we can put that on the agenda for Wednesday to do a vote. Okay, thank you. Alright, so Michelle, there you are. Okay, now, we'll go to the public comment part. We'll have three minutes for any person that would like to speak. Anybody on Facebook that would like to speak, please send a message to Amy. And we'll get to you after we get to the folks that are here in the commission chambers.
You mean Zoom, right? You said Facebook.
Oh, Facebook, yes, Zoom. I was trying to get my stopwatch up here so I could get the three minutes going. Anyone in the chambers that would like to speak? I thought you already spoken now. Oh, give your notes, okay, alright. Okay, just one second, Steve. Let me get my stopwatch here. Okay, come on up to the podium, please.
Okay. I don't know if I can get everything in in three minutes, but hopefully you give me a little consideration since I'm an elected official. I'm here as a private individual, even though I'm the vice president of Fayette County Board of Education. I don't represent anybody else in my box, okay? I want to recognize the fact that you all have a tough job and I appreciate that. I know the statute that you're working under on redistricting magistrate districts and I agree that all the options I heard today met the letter of the law and I'm comfortable with what you're doing. So you know, from my personal point of view, I'll be seventy-two in May. When my terms up, I'm going to be seventy-four. I'm aging. Most likely, I have some physical conditions, not health condition, physical conditions. I probably won't run. So I'm not here talking about protecting Steve Slok. I'm going to properly retire and properly move up to my, closer to my daughter over by Cavill Middle High School. What I'd like to say is I personally prefer either options one or two. And, and there's basically three reasons. I believe that is the least disruptive to the citizens and the communities and nonpartisan elected officials in the county. The second reason is that if you do option three, then the Fayette County Board of Education is going to lose one of our present members because it's going to pit an election between Marion Tanner and Coach Gary Ray. And option four and five, it's going to move Thousand Oaks where I live from the Valley District to plateau. That means now you have four present sitting board members going to be in the same magistrate district, which is going to totally disrupt the governance of the Fayette County Board of Education. So you know, I agree and people are going to be surprised when I say this, Thousand Oaks should not be in the Valley District, okay? It should not. It should be in its historical area, which I believe is New Haven. It shouldn't be in, in what I call the option four or five, be in plateau. So I recommend to Michelle and the commission somehow to maintain Thousand Oaks. If you're going to do option four or five, make a slight correction and put Thousand Oaks in New Haven. I understand the commission has a legal opinion from the Secretary of State. Superintendent Fayette County Schools also has a legal opinion from his legal counsel that's similar to the coming from the secretary's, secretary state's office. And of course, I also understand that your legal counsel prosecutor attorney of Fayette County doesn't agree with that decision. And basically, what my understanding is that if my seat is moved into the new plateau, then Marion Tanner and Gary Ray won't be able to run this election because effective July one, even though I was elected as a Valley magistrate district person, I'll be in the plateau. So there's no room, okay? I recognize the fact that, that three board members live in three different magistrate districts within a mile of each other. And I understand your concern.
Well, let me, let me, let me interject something here. Now, what you just described is consistent with the opinions of the Secretary of State counsel and superintendent. What you tell me, I haven't seen or heard that any, but it is not consistent with the opinion of our prosecuting attorney. So, I mean, I, and he can explain his, but.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, we qualify what I said earlier by saying that my opinion addresses I don't, I, I haven't looked into whether or not it applies to the Board of Education. But if the residency requirements set forth in the constitutional code as far as the Board of Education or the Senate or Senatorate, the logic, the logic would be the same. The, the case, Burkhart, I believe Burkhart decide and essentially Supreme Court of Appeals said that ends the bar as the county commissioners concerned. They essentially are considered to be commissioners for the districts where they reside as of the general election and they carry that designation with them throughout their term.
Whether it changed or not.
Correct. So, in other words, once a, once a county commissioner is elected from a certain district, my opinion is it doesn't matter if they pack their bags and move to another district. Doesn't matter if we re-change the district line, move them into another district. Based on this Supreme Court of Appeals opinion, you know, Justice Maynard was very clear when he says that the elected commissioner carries that designation with them throughout the term of their office. Now, like I said, that applies to the county commission. I don't know whether or not it would apply to the Board of Education or not, but it would make sense that it would.
Of course. I'm not a lawyer, right? And all I'm doing is, is talking about what, what's been conveyed to me to my sources. It also, if, if what the secretary state office is saying, that when this changes for the county commission, you'll become the plateau rep and when Tommy's due up for election, two year Tommy won't be able to run in the same, you know what I'm saying? That, that's my understanding through our sources, okay? And, and I just brought it forward. I've talked to Anthony. I know where Anthony stands and knows where I stand. It's, it's, you know, I just hope when this is all done, okay? That that everybody appreciates the fact that elected officials try to do the best things for the citizens and that when citizens don't agree with elected officials' decision, they don't personally attack, okay? And, and I've known that happen in my case.
Happens to me every day.
And I'm, right, I'm not here to, to attack everybody, anybody, okay?
You have an opinion, everybody has an opinion.
That's, and, and all I'm saying is I believe the Fayette County Board of Education has handled tough issues over the last six years. And the net result is that every kid in Fayette County is receiving a better education in the modern update facilities that are conducive to learn. And our board is not receptive to what I call past political influence that eventually led the state taking over our county. So somehow we, you can preserve the majority on our board to continue the projects. I appreciate that. And like I said, I have no problem being redistrict out of Valley because I don't agree that I ever should have been in the Valley, okay? Historically, New Haven, if you can put me in New Haven, I'll be very comfortable with that. But it's not about, again, like I said, it's not about me. It's about what's best for the students of Fayette County and the Fayette County Board of Education for my part. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thanks for speaking.
We did give Steve a little bit of extra time.
Well, we have talked during it too, so in all fairness.
Yeah, so don't, don't say we didn't give you your swish, swish. Alright, anybody else here in the, come on up? Tell us your name too.
My name is Debbie Bush and I'm representing me and I'm representing the scooped up part of Oak Hill. We call ourselves Scoop Hill. First of all, this is the first time I've ever come before the commission and I'm, I'm really impressed. I was kind of scared too before because I didn't know what it was going to be like, but you guys listen. And I love Commissioner, what you said about wanting people to be represented by officials in their area. That's it. That's why I'm here. I mean, I really love that and I like the fact that you're, you're taking this so seriously. I bet Michelle's ear many times on where's Waldo, where do I go? You know, I live in South Hills. But anyway, I live in South Hills and my sources told me that our part was, I'm in district ten. And our, I was told, and I could be wrong, which I hope I am, that our district was moving to nine, which is in Raleigh County. And if I have a problem, I want to come to you because now I feel confident that you're going to listen to me and you're going to help me. I don't want to go to Raleigh. I'm no offense to Raleigh County. It's, I used to teach there. It was a nice place, but I live in Oak Hill. I've lived here for almost forty years and I love it. I love the plateau. So my dis- concern is that am I still going to get to be able to talk to you guys and be represented by plateau people? And like Mr. Slok had said, I think the board has done a phenomenal job considering the pressure they, I'm a teacher, considering the pressure they've been under. And to mess up with the board just is, but anyway, but I think you're listening. I know you're listening. I can tell.
Well, I'm hopeful the prosecuting attorney's opinion extends to the Board of Education as well because then that would, it just doesn't make sense that all that chaos should ensue when we have to do this every ten years. It just doesn't make sense to me. But they are in our, as far as county is concerned, they're still in Fayette County.
Yeah.
She's referring to the senatorial.
The only difference is the senatorial district. So at least as far as your county government, we're still in Raleigh.
It was Raleigh, Wyoming, Senate district, so you need to call it. And Raleigh's also.
South Hills is in Oak Hill city limits. And isn't Oak Hill city limits up through Nicholas County, Greenbrier County, still in Senate ten?
Nope.
Oak Hill proper is in Senate nine.
Nine.
Okay, so that's your senatorial district. Which is still good to come and talk to us. Yeah, you still get to come and talk to us.
Yeah, where you're still your county government, you're just going to have different state representatives.
Well, just one and then you'll still have your House of Delegate representative.
Here?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be from Fayette County.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks for listening.
No problem.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time to come in and speak to us. That's the most important thing.
Yeah, and we don't bite, so come back and see us. Alright, anybody else would like to say something? Sure, come on.
Mayor Ingram, speaking on us. I didn't realize that was you either.
I just want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to the concern that you had about. I know you're sincere. I know all of you are sincere. You know, we've had some other elected officials in the county that I witnessed theatrics to the hilt of why they did what they did. And the Valley's considerations were not taken, with Valley's concerns were not really taken to heart. I want you all to know, I thank you for what you're doing. Mayor Cavalier, thank you. Seen John Valley a lot lately. And I thank you for what you're doing. I thank you for considering what we want to do now to talk about looking at some, one other option, just one other option. And if it doesn't work, that's great. At least we had the opportunity to present that to you. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
We appreciate everything you're doing down there, Mayor.
Our population is going to grow.
I, I'm, I'm excited. I want it to.
Yeah. Mayor, did you ride your bike up today?
Yeah.
Was it cold?
A little bit.
He, he told me last night when we were at the meeting, he said, uh, he said, I'm going to ride the bike up.
I'm running out of time, okay?
Alright, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, just like Allison said, we appreciate what you and Mayor Cavalier and, and the, everyone else is doing down there in the Upper Canal Valley. It has been a struggle, but we're seeing, we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, I really believe. By the way, there's going to be a new restaurant opening up in Montgomery. It's called Fruits of Labor.
Oh, yeah, it's up there right now, right now. Is that where the other one is? It's a great business. I mean, they, they give second chances to convicted felons and, and they train them how to bake and. Yes, they teach them a trade and they, and they have great food. I love the croissants. I can't wait to come down and get some. When is it going to open? You know?
Uh, she's hiring today. She's having a job there today.
Sweet. Excellent.
We also have a new art gallery opening.
Yeah.
Yep. So. A lot of good things happening. Okay. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, thank you. Now, let's go out to
Zoom.
Zoom land, thank you. You have no requests?
Correct.
Okay, there's no request on Zoom. We have covered quite a few things this morning. A lot of things that the commission is going to have to weigh on, but at first, we're going to wait on the sixth option, which will be here by the close of business Monday night. And if anybody else has another option that they would like to bring up. Michelle, you will let us know on Tuesday morning what the last options were. And then on Wednesday, we'll be able to discuss those. And then the commission will go ahead and vote and that way it'll give you and your staff time to stuff a bunch of envelopes, Sarah. Libby, if you're here to help too, have fun. Alright, anything else on this subject stood for the body? Okay, if you guys would like to stay, you can. We've got a couple other things to go over. And then we'll go from there. Oh, we, we're going to take a break. Yeah, Allison usually tells me. This is a continuation of the special meeting for November the 17th. Of course, was consumed with the magisterial districts and new precincts and precinct changes and house lines and senate lines and all kinds of other stuff. Is, you know where Anthony's at?
He's in the hallway and he got shanghai'd.
Oh, he got shanghai'd?
There he is.
There he is. Okay, good. All right. Get my paper turned over here. This is a discussion and a decision on fire levy expenses. Joe. Joe and Mark, when you guys came in and asked for money to build the training center, we gave you seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to work with. Have we gone over top of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar test?
Yeah, we started. We just started a year after year. A lot of parts for the. Five hundred thousand that I asked for. For the new. Base two.
Okay, when did you come in and ask for that five hundred thousand?
I put it in the budget for the West.
It's in the budget for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I seen it in there.
All right. Mark, you guys need to be aware, like on the paving that you did. Anytime that there's an expense over fifteen thousand dollars, it needs to be bid out. And that paving was, job was not bid out.
Well, it actually was.
Who who else bid it on? Y'all done notification in the paper and everything? Let it run for thirty days?
It all started with the roads that we built from bottom to top. And I put the advertising in, got one proposal back from Jay Lee and Riles. It all began back when we were developing the property. A lot of topsoil was up there. And we traded topsoil for material. So that saved a lot of expense. As the training center developed. We started putting gravel down. As time went on, we started operating down there. The. Equipment started getting tore up from gravel and we happened to replace the. Equipment, which was costing money. And then guys were tripping, spraining ankles. This and that, so as a liability issue. We were we were doing in small chunks of less than what it would cost to bid it out. For unknown reasons, I do not know why, but in the past, we've always. Had jobs since the invoice, we paid. All the invoices come in at one time, for some reason or another, this time around, which, yeah, they did for more than. Fifteen thousand dollars. You know? When we had the issue and with all the other invoices, that's the question. When when the commission meetings were every two weeks and we had to have the invoices in. Days prior to meetings for approval. Most of them come in under question. But now that everything has to be done two weeks prior to meetings, and again, then. Even though they're four thousand here, five thousand there, eight thousand here. Once they're all coming in one time, they're going to show up with twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. There's nothing I can do about that.
Well, there's one invoice here that's seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty cents to come in one time. Did all them invoices come in separate? Well, I'm just, the one I do have, the positive promotions, I'm just saying, when you bid it out, the question is, we don't want to be in trouble with the state auditor. That's 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 it. That's what I think this is all about, is a state auditor. Okay, so when you bitted that out, hold on a second, please, hold on a second. You said you bitted that out and you had it out two weeks, so you got the notification that we can look at? I'm acting like the auditor. Well, I'm I'm acting like. Okay, okay, well, I'm acting like an auditor that's going to question the commission. That about your, what what you're doing, no matter what, the commission gets all the heat either way.
But. That seventeen thousand dollars for positive promotion is fire prevention that we buy all the departments for the schools. Every year that we've done for the past. One more than that this year.
I read it.
And. I get quotes from different vendors. No, don't bid it out because we've always used the same vendor, year after year after year, the old bag come in to lower us.
So you have to buy the the bags and the cups from fire prevention vendors? Okay, that's okay, yeah.
I mean, just, there's a lot of times when we'll buy the whole package, it's got the material. It's called fire prevention in a box, and it's got certain items in it.
And I read this.
And being and being a paid member of NFPA, we get discounts versus those that are not members. So if I buy involved. I get it cheaper than buying it in bulk.
And and I understand the bulk thing, I believe me, I purchased stuff, I purchased all my meat during the winter. Right now, there's no meat to be purchased right now. But I do every winter, I buy all my, for a whole year in the winter.
You know, I thought.
So I understand.
We follow, we follow the legacy guidelines, we have written out for all departments for purchasing.
Okay, well, did you do the training? I'm just curious. Did you do the training when you handed this stuff out? Because it says you're supposed to do training with the schools. When you more or less hand this stuff out, is that correct? Am I am I reading this wrong? Fire prevention training to the schools, at the schools?
Each individual fire department that has the schools in their districts goes out and delivers this.
Delivers it, says supposed to do training at the schools?
Well, I'm saying delivers, but.
This, let me, let me give you. This year, like at Fayetteville. Our fire prevention officer at our department chose just to take the material to the school and let the school hand it out because of the COVID deal. They didn't feel that. Us bringing people in, classrooms, doctors, kids like we have in the past, would be everybody's best interest. I know some departments that had smaller schools, did go to the schools. But I I can speak for Fayetteville because I know what we done here. They just chose to take the materials to the schools for the fact of didn't want to bring nothing into the schools and cause an issue.
Yeah.
Normally, normally, there is, we we usually at Fayetteville, there's usually like a week we take. We get all the schools and daycareers and anything like that in our area. And our officers in charge of fire prevention, we hit every school.
I got another question too. It says October is the week, last week of October, first week of October is when you do this.
Yeah, it goes, it goes with the great Chicago fire, when Mrs. Littlery's cowl.
Kicked it over the. So is there any, I'm just curious, I'm asking questions because when you talk about fifty thousand dollars a year spent in stuff taken to the schools. And I look what's, and and, you know, I'm not, I'm just asking questions. And the stuff that was taken to the schools, I wonder if the kids use it after October?
A lot of the reason that we need the like backpacks or bags opposed to just a a plastic bag was so that they would.
Right, well, October, school's already started. That's what I'm getting at. I was I was heading in a drift direction.
And just like, we usually try to put something in there for the parents, whether it be a pot holder or something like that.
Major, major.
Have you have you thought about asking the superintendent of the schools or the schools or the principals what some of the kids really need? I'm going in a direction with this because I I used to get a list of all the needs and I used to buy coats and socks and stuff that kids, some of them that don't have. I mean, that's that's, I mean, and I'm not harping on y'all, but sometimes when I call the school, you know, I have bought stuff like that because winter comes up.
I have that system sort of.
Yeah, and I have done that. I have done it. In fact, I was going to buy a large quantity of soap and toothbrush. And because the teachers and principal told me at one of these schools that kids are in need of some of the stuff like that. So I was going to do that also at one time. So I'm just asking, if we're talking about the people's money, we turn it in a way that maybe they could be used.
Honestly, I mean, you know, we've always thought just fire prevention stuff, we've never really thought.
You can still put your logo on it.
We put smoke detectors.
Yeah, I read, I read. Yeah, in in some of the, for elderly and you talked. And in October, everybody's got a bag. I'm not trying to, the the parents has already went out and bought bags so they can carry their books and stuff in or backpacks.
You know, believe it or not, we. We use them all year long. I mean, there's groups that come in and ask for them, we hand them out.
Okay, okay, so not, it's not just October then? Okay.
I think it's coming in the off year round.
Okay, okay, well, I'm just curious because it says October, first week of October is when all this will be done.
We, I mean, we, we've got a big one on those, Fayetteville. We call Joe, Joe, what do you got? You got anything from years past? You know, the makeup bags, you know, just to use.
We always put stuff in the health fair, the Montgomery hospital, on a yearly basis.
And a lot of park strut keeps up on hand, just made up to where the kid comes in the fire station, they can just hand them a bag. You know, just for stopping by a fire station.
Armstrong Creek does it for Halloween and has a Halloween party for those kids every year.
We purchase it weekly, you know, it's for fire prevention, it's used.
Okay.
But we will, I do like that bit of stuff, seeing if there's anything special.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, John.
That's okay.
Joe, I want to know what your idea for what your job is as the fire coordinator for the county.
It's more managing the fire levying on dispersion. I'm also. Coordinate all of the testing to make sure it gets done. Approving their truck purchases, if they, to make sure they're buying what they need. A fire service instructor, which is part of the requirement to. Have the job. But, you know, it's mostly into the management and dispersment and approval of the.
Yeah, when I read that, I appreciate you asking that, John. When I read that, I thought that's the only requirement that really it says that you're supposed to do.
But there is a, that, but you know, there was a list. That the fire association had. There should, there should, there should be a doctor in the file.
Okay, do you also disseminate information to the fire departments? And fire departments give them to you and then you give them to the nine-one-one operations?
As what what kind of information are you?
Any information coming back saying that, you know, there was a address difference on where we went out on a call? Or, you know, anything you communicate, they communicate to you?
Yes.
So, Mark, you take information.
We've got a complaint against a nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Department was dispatched from. Their, the way that we used to do the verbal thing and when we said, hey, if it's not in writing, it don't matter. Because it was too much, he said, she said.
So I developed a complaint form in three, and this is back when I was. Probably vice president, president of the fire association back. And. Marvin, three copies, one went to the fire coordinator, one went to the nine-one-one director and. And fire, and fire department kept one. And. You know, we've been using those, but.
Can you change something on it? Can one of them go to the commission? I mean, if if, I think anytime there's a problem at the nine-one-one center, everybody comes to the commission. And I think the commission should be the, one of the first that's notified if there's a complaint in writing to us. I mean, in my opinion, I don't know how the other two commissioners feel about it. But because we're supposed to oversee and make sure that if there's a problem, that it's taken care of.
We always try to. Handle things over level because we felt.
We have enough on our plate?
Yes.
Well.
I I mean, you know, but, you know, and it's not a disrespect to you guys. You know, we've got a different commission, you know, you know. So, you know, I mean, there's no issue at all. If y'all want the complaints from the fire departments.
Put us in that, make it number four, make four.
Put you in in that, that is not a issue. We will put that on the agenda for Thursday night.
And I have the approval and permission.
I still have it on my calendar. I'm still planning to go. Fire Association meeting tomorrow night.
Oh.
Seven thirty at the nine-one-one center.
You going?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm gonna spend my Veterans Day as a veteran. I always work on Veterans Day. I've worked every Veterans, in the military, we worked on Veterans Day, of course.
You can bring her a little cake, stop and get a little baby or something like that.
I was thinking about that.
Yeah, I want a great start. Yeah, I want a gold star. I just want a gold star, that's it.
Mark, did you guys receive the new, the new tone out policy for the fire departments yet from the nine one one center?
That will be, that will be brought up in the, in the meeting tomorrow night. It's on the agenda for, excuse me.
Okay, well.
I've already got copies made and ready to hand out.
Okay, when was that policy written?
The original one or the modified one?
The modified one.
Two weeks ago.
Actually, it was longer than that.
It was when I got it.
Okay, well, still yet, if something's important as that, since we've heard so many moaning and groanings about it, you should have given it to the lady that works with you and say, hey, fax this out to everybody or, or get it emailed out to everyone. We need to make this top of mind. How long ago was that? I received it three weeks ago.
Okay, I'll place it here.
So, I mean, that's why you've got her working with you to help you get information out to the fire departments. So that's important that we make sure we stay on top of that. Because like I said, that's one of the biggest issues that we have because some departments wanted to do some things, some departments wanted to do some things else. I feel that it's a good representation of what actually is going to be done from, well, three weeks ago on. On how to take care of that. See, I thought that your job was to take care of the, the fire levy, do the testing, take care of the truck purchases, be the instructor for fire services, send out information, gather information, and that you are the, you were the go between, between the fire department and the nine one one center when in reality, reality, you're not. You're, you're just an advanced manager of the fire levy money and, and some extra dues. So we need to come up with an idea of how we can get information sent out to the fire department and how to get information collected from the fire departments. Because that's not part of his job description. Go ahead, Mark.
As president of the association, I would strongly ask that, that we either make that part of his job description because the way the fire, fire association looks to the fire coordinator is, he is the fire chief's, I guess you could say liaison to county government, whether it be the nine one one center or, or y'all. That's the reason that the position was created years ago because of fire chiefs having to take off work and bring their problems to the commission and, and deal with levy, you know, expenses. It was easier to put it under one person, you know, one house and, and handle it that way. If information's not getting down like it should be, then the officers of association, the commission and Joe, we need to sit down and have a a, a talk, even though I understand it's a personal issue, personnel issue or person that the association will not have, but with it being something that we had a hand in creating, you know, we would ask to be part of. The other part of Joe's job that is not, that nobody has mentioned and even Joe except he is, you know, the departments rely on Joe also when there's an incident going on or a large incident going on to show up and bring resources. And what I mean by resources is when he shows up, you know, hey, guys, I'm here to help. What do you need?
The organizer.
Yeah, and we need to bump it up to the county level and get Kevin involved. Or is this something that stays at the local fire chiefs, you know, level? And we just need some outside agency far as knowing, hey, we need to bring some experts from Dupont up here to handle something and he relays it to Kevin or not Dupont, Moore's. And, or do we need some outside agency assistance like for Nicholas County? Or do we need a special piece of equipment that they have? It's no different than when another county requests our rope team or swift water team to go there. Usually the call goes into the nine one one center, you know, and we're timed out and stuff, but Joe's monitoring. You know, he gets in touch with somebody at the other county and, hey, you know, when you've got one more, you know, do, do they need an expert somewhere? And, you know, also when he shows up, you know, hey, do we need to set up rehab? You know, this will be a long drawn out incident, incident, incident to where, you know, we need to set up rehab. We've got rehab tents that, you know, that we've purchased. And, you know, do we need to set these up? Is it something long drawn out that we need to set up? The rehab tent uses command tent, you know, or do we need to bring the the ERT trailer down with a few air bottles?
No, I agree with you and I think, I don't know what the other commissioners do because, but we don't, the only thing it says in here, basically what I got out of this is managing the, the funding. There's not enough, there's not anything that, that relates to that.
I, I mean, there should be in the job description, but when we hire, when we done the interview process, we have a written out job description.
Well, my thoughts.
I'll, I'll, I just gotta look for it.
Okay, well, my thoughts were that he was the chief of the chiefs in order to get everything taken care of, but it, it's not.
Now, the, and the reason, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The reason he's not, I guess you can say, chief of the chief is because Fayette County operates as sixteen individual fire departments. Now, with that being said, we do a lot of group purchasing, group training as much as we can, but we learned real early on in the infancy of the levies that by putting all of our purchasing higher again, that we can acquire a lot more than.
Or a lot less.
If each individual department hits something.
That's like all the little error things that we got, what was it, two or three years ago?
Yes.
And we got out to everywhere.
And, and, you know, it's, you know, you just take air packs, air compressors, thermal imaging cameras. We've got thermal imaging cameras that are approaching thirty years old. We're looking at, you know, it's getting to the time for them.
It's costing more money to send them off, get them fixed and use the batteries.
That's just about with anything today, unfortunately. You might, might not be able to find a new one today, though.
Well, unfortunately, what, what our problem is, is our handlers are good. It's just that we need new batteries. And the company that bought the camera manufacturer out through the inner workings of the camera, guess what? They don't like that. It, it's, you know, because they took the guts out of what we had and put it into their new little package and nothing works. And but the part, in fact, what I'm getting at is sixteen departments is even if we perform a county fire department, it would be strongly recommended to keep your sixteen individual corporations. And, and the reason for that is that the state, I mean, you're looking at.
About forty to forty-five thousand dollars a year.
So you take.
For a department.
Yeah, that they get for just doing fire reports.
As long as they do.
And all.
Yeah, as long as they do it.
Long, long as they meet their criteria.
That's right, yeah.
But, you know, again, you know, we heart on them and, and, you know.
And I have actually, there's about four departments in this county now because I haven't, we haven't done their audits for them and bailed them out of financial behind them. They would not be in existence today.
Yeah, I've, I've got a, I had a list of, when I started, there was, they just didn't file them.
Yeah.
Just didn't, just didn't file them.
I took it up on myself.
Yeah.
In the evenings when I went home and went through their financials and got them straightened out and got their stuff sent in and they started getting their money back.
See, that's, Joe, this is so old and that's some of the questions I had after I read this, you know. I, I mean, it, you got fifteen county fire departments on here, but they're not county fire departments. They're all separate now, right? Yeah, it's sixteen individual fire departments. It says fifteen, yeah, but it says, it's so old, it says fifteen on here. And the information I got that you brought the other day was from twenty thirteen. And there's nothing up to date on some of this stuff that I've read. And what you're telling me is different from what, that he brought this to us. And the fact that it even says seven seventeen fifteen, I believe it says on here. So, and we just got this the other day. So, I mean, nothing's updated. There's nothing even updated. I mean, I just.
That has been a doggone line since I became president, just to try to provide y'all a yearly report of this is what we've done in Fayette County, this is what we've purchased, this is what we've upgraded. And, and in listening to you, we're all made that.
Yeah, see, and I've even asked Joe for, I mean, and I'm not, I'm just, you know, I've asked Joe for this information. I'm gonna ask you for at the end of the meeting and when everybody's done, Ms. Taylor hasn't got to talk with, I've probably been interrupting her so much, she probably may throw something at me. But at the end, when everybody else talks, there's some stuff I've asked Joe for before. Just give me a general idea of where, where everything stands.
I've got it for you already. It's just need to be good on the, the, the thumb drive.
I think it's what we talked about the last.
Okay, you got that too?
On the drive.
I'm talking. Okay, this, okay. Well, there's some other stuff though, Joe. I just asked.
I can only go back so far.
Yeah, well, I just asked this gentleman last meeting, he was in about ten minutes, but it's other stuff I've asked.
I can only go back so far.
Okay, well.
What, what, what you're asking.
Okay.
I don't know what you're referring to, but I can only go back to two thousand five. I can go out of memory, out of memory.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I, I just wanted to update on what the years the vehicles are. If he, if that, I just, you just, you don't have to get to me now.
The, I'll put it this way, the oldest vehicle in your fire protection fleet is probably no more than I would say thirty years. NFPA recommends that ten years they go to reserve status. We do our pump replacement based on, hey, try to do it twenty years.
Twenty years.
In other.
Now, ladder thirty.
And, you know, but now NFPA's telling us that our turnout gear be where that it, it doesn't matter whether you, you know, you're on a fire department and we buy you a set year when you get on the department and you're not winning one fire, but in years, they're telling us that gear's gotta be replaced. Everything we've got now, where years ago it used to be almost a fast ass or this, now they're putting life stamps in everything.
Even the V, the pumper station and everything, right?
Yes, yes. I mean, they're telling us, hey, that, that at the ten year mark, a bumper needs to be taken to the reserve status, you know, a twenty year mark, it can, it can be as a total backup, but they're wanting it out of service. And we can try, we try best we can to guarantee that each department's got a pumper that needs that. We're not gonna be able to make everybody's bumper be less than twenty years old. And they're gonna have a truck that's over twenty years old. First off, it takes over a year or sometimes to build a truck. It's getting a little quiet. And as it is now, it may take two years. You know, also parts will miss.
How soon before they start coming out with electric trucks?
They're already out, sir.
That's what I thought. I'm told to.
They are already out. In fact, all of the the major manufacturers are out. Rosenbauer, the company that a lot of trucks here, Fayette County are, built one for overseas, brought it and they have orders for I want to say just about close to a dozen of them. Los Angeles is trying one. There's a lot of departments out west trying. A lot of the departments, larger city departments have went to what they call Green Island Technology. In other words, if they pull in at a fire scene or where, where they run patient care calls in larger cities and the trucks aren't, are sitting there idling. The main engine shut off and like a little backup battery bank or backup diesel engine will start up and keep the oil, warning lights and batteries charged. But the big engine shut off to cut exhausts. But then look into the electric panel of the truck. I don't even think about having to deal with the maintenance issue there.
Well, see, I have this personal feeling that they're being told for these car manufacturers, listen, we want everybody to be on green energy. We're going to all electric cars. That's why there's such a shortage on ships.
Once they're putting that, they're probably in pain.
All right, well, I have some questions.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Joe, what do you understand to be your authority with regard to spending the money that we've approved in your budget? What are the dollar amounts? What I'm asking is, once we approve your budget, when you want to make an expenditure out of that budget, is it your understanding that you can spend whatever you want and whatever amount out of that budget yourself without bringing it to the commission or?
If it is something that needs bid it out or following the levy guidelines, I try to go by that, but large purchases that is forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, I'm always brought to the commission in the face.
Because I, I mean, I saw that, I wrote down what you said when you were spending in chunks of what it would cost to bid things out. The bottom line is, it's taxpayer dollars and even our spending authority, who is Ruth and I'm her backup, we can't unilaterally spend more than fifteen thousand dollars and we haven't. From what I understand from the minutes, apparently a previous commission decided your limit was six hundred dollars without commission approval and then up to fifteen by Ruth or by whoever at the time is Commissioner Brennaman, spending authorities. And then they didn't inform you of it, from what we could tell. They made that decision, but they didn't send the letter to let you know that. And my concern is, I mean, it's taxpayer dollars. The other budgets that come through this office are elected officials and they have a different ability to spend taxpayer dollars than you as an unelected official would have. By, by law and by statute, at least, I mean, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, Ruth, but my concern is that we, we get a process in place that protects you and us because you aren't authorized to spend that amount of money without our permission. You just aren't, by statute. You're not elected. We're the elected people who oversee what you do because it's taxpayer dollars and how it's collected. So I don't know how you guys came up with the six hundred dollars. Was that somewhere in the code or was that just some random amount?
That, that was, that was an amount that I set as the spending person and letters were sent to each department head, including Joe and Kevin and the other person that was out at nine one one at that time.
Okay.
Because we had people that were spending six hundred and seventy dollars for three toner cartridges when Amy could get them for, I think, forty dollars apiece.
So.
So we put all that, we got all that under control.
And I'm not saying that the, the letters didn't go out, but we couldn't find. And I'm not saying that the, the letters didn't go out, but we couldn't find in the mess that Ruth inherited, the letter. Any evidence that a letter went out. So as far as I'm concerned, it didn't because we can't prove it did.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so, but what I do think we need to do, um, I think Ruth is our spending authority and our, our county administrator needs to, you know, that's maybe something we need to get done because it applies to Kevin too. Kevin does come to us with his expense as far as I know. Um, and so we've caused, make the farm do it. I mean, everybody who was under the county umbrella and that includes you, Joe. Um, so I think we need to just come up with a policy with Willie.
Willie's working on it.
Is he working on it? So in the meantime, what is the dollar amount, um, for anyone under you with the other offices? Is there any dollar amount?
Always six hundred dollars.
Always six hundred dollars. So anything over six hundred dollars until we get this policy together, if you would. If it's under fifteen, Ruth can approve it. Um, the only thing that I get involved in is if the ship, because her son works for the sheriff, is sheriff's department stuff. So I'm really not involved in those decisions at all. Um, if she has questions, she comes to us. And then we'll get a policy in place. If you have input for her based on your routine expenses and if you need that six hundred dollar amount raised, just discuss that with her so that, so we have that input. Cause I don't want you, every single thing you write, because your expenses tend to be larger in bulk than the, the typical type of expense that we see. Give her that feedback so we can consider it.
Well, most of the bulk stuff that I buy is personal protective equipment to keep in stores, out of the office, so when a fire department needs it. Uh, white gloves, no mess hoods. Uh, they purchase it from me at what I purchase it from the vendor. So, you know, the money's coming right back to buy more as we run out.
Okay. Well, again, um, there are all these rules about we have to compete anything that's over fifteen thousand and all that stuff. Um, and I just want to make sure that we are doing things by the book. Um, because I don't want us to lose the levy. I don't want us to lose the confidence of tactic.
Well, we've got enough people already working on that right now.
Well, um, but that said, you know, if you'll just comply with the current, you know, understood policy, the six hundred dollars and fifteen thousand and below can be approved by Ruth and the rest you should just get on the agenda and present it to us. Um, that should cover us all until we get that policy implemented. But we certainly welcome your feedback in informing that policy because, you know, we, you know, that was a dollar amount Commissioner came up with at the time. It may not make sense for you and we can write that into the policy, but we need to have, hear what you have to say about it. You guys have anything else? You guys have any questions, comments?
Well, I just wanna and I go ahead and make a request for some purchasing.
We can't today because we didn't notice it on the agenda. But if you, I mean, if it's, if it's under fifteen, again, you know, that's something that Ruth can do. If it's over that, we have to get it on the agenda, give notice to the public so the public knows where the money's going. That's where we land on this stuff. And all that's noticed on the agenda today is just that we were going to discuss the expenditures, not any requests for funding. I mean, what do you think, Anthony?
I don't think, I mean, I take the agenda either to mean it's a general discussion about how the money is spent and the processes and the procedure, but I don't think it's specific enough.
A request. But we have a meeting next week on the seventeenth and we have a meeting on December eighth. So, I mean.
We're wanting to get a bid first and try it.
Okay.
For the instructors at the training center.
So what's gonna happen is that stuff's gonna have to be competed as required by code. And then once you guys have somebody, then you're gonna have to run that through us.
So we can go ahead and bid it?
Yeah, you can go ahead and bid it.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to say.
I mean, that's what I think. What do you guys think? Anthony, John, Tom?
Yeah.
I mean, if they're soliciting bids, they haven't made a purchase yet and then they can submit.
I don't have a problem. I think you're right.
Yeah, I think so.
And oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, without knowing what it's gonna cost, we're not gonna know, you know.
And bring us a copy of the ad where it was in the newspaper.
Bring the ad, bid.
We just, those are things you should just keep track of and, and the county clerk keeps track of official documents and stuff too. You could submit it to her to, to, um, put on the record for us. Um, but that stuff that we need to, of course, really what you need is, you know, when did you advertise it? Cause if it went out in public, they're probably gonna be able to find the newspaper, but you know, keep some records and protect yourself because if somebody comes in and says, wait a minute, you know, Mark's best friend just did this project and, you know, and nobody else even knew about it, you know, then we can say, well, everybody knew about it. Anything else, everybody?
No, I think, I think he knows what I'm, you know, all the information I'm looking for, I guess, because you said, you said part of it.
Yeah. Well, after, after we talked the other day, I asked Joe, I wanted go back at least five years, ten years for that to give you, uh, dream material. But then, you know, you're, uh, and that we are I'm wanting him to take our monthly minutes and uh, I want to keep a binder out there so that you y'all wanna know what went on.
Anybody, that's a good idea.
At a meeting, you just ask the other day. You can come out and look at the minutes or you shoot me a clock. Get and, uh, no, I mean, I I have no problem following anything y'all say. We're gonna be yeah, we've got a great thing going down Charlie Mountain. Uh, we're gonna be doing training down there this weekend if or Saturday.
What time?
Uh, we'll probably start about eight o'clock.
I heard from Steve E, you had some pretty cool stuff going on down there and I want to see it. I was at, I had a cousin thing last weekend.
I'll even thank you a step further. If you're interested in participating, I feel very sure that there's some gear there and I hope to put you right in the air.
I heard that might involve me in a smoky dark room.
Actually, it ain't too smoky. It might be spotty for a minute.
What, uh?
I'll think about that.
Do we charge out of area, uh, out of county people to come in and train?
We charge them exactly what they were being charged.
Five, six years.
Basically, two dollars a day.
Yeah, but you mentioned that there's somebody that did it.
Please help us.
Yeah.
I never said that. I never said nothing.
Freshman.
Okay.
After the first year, we're going to see what the cost of lumber and because each time we do a, a fire, uh, we're burning a minimum of five sheets of it. We're fortunate. Uh, we received three products from, we're not just have to ask what I would give. Versus give us ten brands to purchase. Done golf course, the boost man, that train. Uh, Dow is for some stuff for us. Our guys last weekend. And they were just the, the guys were just amazing.
We've even got, we've even got people coming from out of other states.
Cool.
Looking at our facility.
We have, but when, we've got some great, right? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very proud of it.
Yeah, there's a gentleman out of Charleston that has a dive shop. And he's gonna be doing some oh. He's gonna be doing some training on the river. And I told him that, you know, right up from Montgomery where you're gonna be doing your training, we have an in-county uh, fire training place. And, uh, he was gonna take it back to Charleston.
Yeah, we've got, uh, we had one of our, actually one of our instructors is on uh, we've got the guys that are in Montgomery or Charleston. That they know about it, that I sort of feel that probably South Charleston will probably be more accepted than where people are. Just the fact that Charleston was pretty much did their own, set their own fuel package and we've got a set fuel package that back over and around. See that, make sure. They don't like being sold to. Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that some people just have a problem with that, but everybody that has been through it or not been contacted. Yeah. You know, our department, did we have to be in the fight? You know.
So this training center helps keep our hours like their continuing education hours up so they can still be a fireman?
It will help us keep that you know, right now, we know set hour. But it helps us to keep our gas. You know, we've got departments that may run getting fire calls a year. So that means that your guys may be in a three D apparatus. Fifteen minutes out of the year where we can take them down there on Saturday and Sunday or Friday, Saturday and Sunday and, and put them through our three uh, buildings we have at this point and they probably have more time in three D apparatus than they have
In the field.
Fire club. And the whole thing that, you know, I look at is, I don't want a firefighter have a problem with fire and not be familiar enough with these equipment.
Oh, yeah, that'd be tragic.
Yes.
And, and, you know, it, it's nice to have the fire levy, have all the money and all the equipment, but, you know, we just gotta, you know, eventually I want to see a rotating schedule, you know, this month, hey, you know, we have field Fayetteville down there and next month will be Fayetteville, Landstead, you know. And but we're just we're getting there, but it, it's all steps. Just like I said, uh, one of the instructors in the county's got a class and then another fire department says, well, that already, will you come down with me? You know, because no fire department can afford to free your whole department at one time. But you're totally drained of your area. But you can take six guys from Oak Hill, six guys from Fayetteville, six guys from Landstead that work together and put them down there. And then we can also write that down as uh, company training at the departments where we have to have so much heat ray training here to help with our injury.
Good. Has Lonnie going through it yet? The fire marshal?
Yeah.
Have you invited him down?
Haven't had, our open house has not even had, we haven't had an open hatchet. To invite y'all down to, I mean, we haven't had a, a true dedication ceremony.
I think I would try to get in touch with, with Lonnie, the fire marshal and, um, have him come down and take a look at it.
We have the number two fire marshal down there. But his fire department will flash through.
Okay, good.
In fact, we, uh, one of the departments sponsored a grant for us through Fire Marshal Callers and we was awarded it to help us buy another training program.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're going after every give me, get me, free me, we can get. It's not just us trying to skip everyone out of the way. Work with our industry partners and all of that.
Good, good.
We're welcome. Again, I will start working on the area. I've wanted to do it for years and I think today is, this is just a good time.
It'll help.
Good.
Um, at this, at this point, I'd like to move, we go into executive session to discuss a couple of related matters, um, with our attorney. I want to ask him legal advice.
One second. Okay, we'll be going into executive session at eleven twenty-three. Again.
Got it. I'm ready to shoot.
Um, we're back from our executive session. It is now twelve forty-one.
Eleven forty-one.
Eleven forty.
Oh, eleven forty.
No, it's not.
It's not baseball.
It's eleven forty-one. Thanks, Tom. I can use a double set. So, uh, at this time.
Um, well, no decision, well, we discussed memorializing the guidance we gave to the fire coordinator um, and any implications with the auditor and got legal advice on those things. And, um, I would like to move that we, um, memorialize our instruction to the fire coordinator with regard to the spending policies. That, that he is the sole person responsible and accountable to the commission for the fire levy expenditures that no other, um, uh, department or head of department or the association itself is, is, uh, in charge of that, but he is. Um, what is the spending limit is six hundred dollars. Um, anything over six hundred and under fifteen thousand can be approved by the county administrator. Any project, um, we do not, those rules aren't applied with regard to by invoice, but with regard to projects. Um, so just because an invoice is under fifteen thousand dollars, if the project is over fifteen, it must come through the commission. Um, further, um, I'm trying to think, there was, seems like there was one other thing I was missing.
Invoice.
Yeah, that's, so, um, oh, bidding, um, that any, you know, that, that the fire coordinator is responsible for, um, learning if he doesn't already know, but he should know because he's been handling money. Um, the state purchasing laws and adhering to them, to the letter. Those are the, those are the main points that we want to make sure that, um, letter goes to the fire coordinator and a copy to the fire association. So it is aware of what our expectations are and, and, and that, uh, that our fire coordinator and not the association will, um, be the point on all the spending.
A second. Okay, we have a, a motion to send the letter and a second, and I am not going to recap all of that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, go.